Good evening and welcome to the September ninth, twenty twenty five regular session meeting of City Council. If you are with us tonight and would like to address council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate item I for matters germane to City Council if the item you wish to speak to is not on the agenda. The light system is three minutes. On our podium, we have a light system. After stating your name and address, the green light will appear. After two minutes, the yellow light will appear. And after three minutes, the red light will appear. And we ask that you take your seat. Written remarks may be handed to the city clerk to be made a part of the record. The city code identifies the procedure for citizen participation regarding items on tonight's City Council agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address City Council on matters that are germane to the business of council. Matters that are germane to the business of the council means matters that the City Council by law is empowered to act upon. This does not include announcements that are personal to you, your business, or your organization, including campaign information. Copies of the city ordinance regarding citizen participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. If you intend to address council this evening, please pick up and review a copy of the ordinance. Please silence your phones. Excuse me. Prior to the beginning of the business portion of the meeting, Pastor Samuel Green with Saint John's Church of God in Christ will provide an invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilman Long will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. It is the practice of the council members to stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome but are not under any obligation to do so. Thank you. All right.
First, if I may, I am privileged to be here this evening to pray concerning the business and the persons who are responsible to take care of the city business, and I thank God for this opportunity. In the book of Psalms one thirty-seven and one, it states, "If the Lord doesn't keep the city, they that watch, watch but in vain." Gracious heavenly Father, we come this evening, calling upon your holy name, beseeching you by your divine glory and power, to environ us. Please permeate this place with your presence. We pray that you, God, would fill every space that we are here in. Lord, we pray that we will honor your divine will, that as these ambassadors that are chosen by the community and anointed by you for service, that, oh God, they will do the business, oh God, in the spirit of unity, in the spirit of care of the people. For Lord, even in Jesus' coming, and we are believers in Christ, though some may not be. Father, we pray that because in his coming, he came, oh God, to lift the heavy burden from those who were oppressed, to, oh God, relieve those who are sick and healed. Father, we pray that these leaders will find in themselves to follow the example of such great kind character and that, oh God, they would, oh God, reach into your glory, reach into your will and purpose, and, oh God, fulfill the purpose that they have been chosen, to lead, to guide, oh God, with wisdom, with vision, with great understanding, that they might, oh God, be a help and a saving grace to all that are citizens of this great city. We ask it in Jesus' name, that, oh God, peace would abound, grace would abound, and that the spirit of harmony would abound in the lives of every citizen because of the work of these great leaders. In Jesus' name, we praise you and thank you. Amen and amen.
You join me in saying the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Real quick before, do we have the mayor on?
He's on, but he can't hear. They're working through it.
Okay. I'm seeking a motion to allow Councilmember Mayor Philip Jones to participate in this meeting from a remote location through electronic communication means because a medical condition of a family, of a member of their family requires Mayor Jones to provide care that prevents their physical attendance.
So moved.
Second.
Take it. Motion has been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
I check.
You're too early. You're too soon. Too soon. Too soon.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones. Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilman Coleman and Harris.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, it's not working. Let's try it. There we go.
All right, motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you. We have two presentations this evening. The first is a proclamation honoring the honorable Gary Anderson. At this time, I invite Ms. Anderson to join City Council at the podium. Hey, everyone. We want y'all up here with us. All right. I get to read a shorter version of this, but this is still honoring someone who I had the pleasure of meeting. Great gentleman, but I'd like to read a little bit of it if I can. All right. Whereas the honorable Gary Anderson dedicated his career to the service of the citizens of Newport News, beginning as a courtroom clerk and rising to the esteemed position of clerk of the circuit court. And whereas throughout his tenure, he was a hands-on leader, ensuring that the court operated with efficiency, integrity, and accessibility for all who sought justice. Personally, working the front counter, answering phone calls, and setting high expectations for his staff. And whereas, under his leadership, the office of the clerk of court was highly respected, a testament to his unwavering dedication, legal knowledge, and the deep respect he earned from colleagues, legal professionals, and the community alike. And whereas, beyond his professional achievement, Gary Anderson was a devoted family man, sharing thirty-five years of marriage with his beloved wife Kathy and taking immense pride in his daughters Erin and Kelsey, as well as his son-in-law Matt and his cherished grandson Tyler. And whereas, his love for his family was evident in every aspect of his life, from supporting his daughters in their endeavors to bonding with his grandson, creating lifelong memories filled with love and joy. And whereas, his faith and commitment to service extended beyond the courtroom as an active member and volunteer leader at Saint Luke's United Methodist Church, embodying the principles of compassion and dedication to his community. And whereas, a proud native of Massachusetts and a lifelong fan of the Boston Red Sox, okay, and the New England Patriots, he also called Virginia home, graduating from TAB High School and Virginia Tech as a dedicated hokey. And whereas, his legacy of service, leadership, and kindness continues to be felt by those who had the privilege of knowing him, working alongside him, and benefiting from his wisdom and generosity. Now, therefore, I, not the mayor of Newport News, but I'm gonna say it right here, Philip, if you're watching. Uh, now I, Philip Jones, mayor of the city of Newport News, Virginia, proudly recognize and honor the honorable Gary Anderson for his unwavering commitment to justice, public service, and community. A true champion of the people, his tireless dedication and profound impact have left an enduring legacy in Newport News, touching countless lives with his integrity and devotion. We express our deepest gratitude for his invaluable contributions and celebrate his memory, honoring his service and ensuring that his legacy of integrity, family devotion, and selflessness endures in the hearts and minds of those who follow in his footsteps. Presented in loving memory of a dedicated public servant, a cherished family man, and a true pillar of the Newport News community. We can clap. If you wouldn't mind providing a few remarks? Totally up to you. No pressure.
Gary was the speaker, not me. Yeah, Gary was very proud to the time he spent working in Newport News, and he did a fabulous job. And we were so proud of him, and we miss him every day. I thank you for the time today and for this recognition. Thank you so much.
All right, we're going to get a photo. Brian, you tell us, should we be in front or we're good here? All right. Well deserved.
I remember when you heard that.
Exactly. Yeah, it's so good to see you again. Hold on, I'm sorry. We have one more. We have one more. Our second presentation this evening is a proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. At this time, I invite Mr. Owen Miller and the Hispanic Advisory Committee to join City Council at the podium. Y'all got a front row seat. Y'all come on. Good to see y'all again. I remember we did this at the, uh, we were midtown. We were in midtown, right? All right. Right there. Get a situator. All right, we have another nice proclamation to read, and the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month, celebrated annually from September fifteenth to October fifteenth, is a time to honor the rich culture, history, and contributions of Americans whose roots trace back to Spain, Mexico, Central and South America, and the Caribbean. What began in nineteen sixty-eight as a week-long observance has expanded into a month dedicated to recognizing and honoring the vibrant diversity of Hispanic communities across the nation. And whereas, this year's theme, Collective Heritage, honoring the past, inspiring the future, reflects the enduring legacy of resilience, leadership, and cultural vibrancy that Hispanic communities bring to every facet of our society. And whereas, our Hispanic population in Newport News continues to grow, now making up nearly ten percent of the city as of twenty twenty, we proudly acknowledge the many contributions of Hispanic residents, businesses, organizations, and faith-based institutions that make Newport News and the entire coastal Virginia region stronger, more diverse, and inclusive. And whereas, Newport News is committed to embracing and celebrating the rich heritage and vibrant culture of our Hispanic community, fostering unity and inclusivity for all. Now, therefore, I, again, not the mayor, but I'm representing him. Philip Jones, mayor of the great city of Newport News, Virginia, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, as National Hispanic Heritage Month. In the city of Newport News, we invite everyone to join us in celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month through engaging bilingual events, resource fairs, youth activities, in our second annual Hispanic Heritage Month restaurant week. Please give it up for him. I don't know, from leadership Owen or somebody, just a few words. Owen, I'm putting you on the spot. You gotta do it.
I will simply say, on behalf of the members of the Hispanic Advisory Committee, want to appreciate and thank council for recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month as well as all of the things that our Hispanic community does and means to the city of Newport News. So, thank you all. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, picture. No.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Just a quick recess. If you would like to leave, definitely now would be the time. We will take a few minutes or seconds. All right. Public hearings. Item E one is a request to adopt an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CU twenty twenty-five zero 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 five, to Volvo Center Associates LLC and Latasha Vinnie of Taylor Smoke to allow for the operation of a nightclub, type two, and a four thousand square foot suite on a two point sixty-six acre parcel located at six thirty-nine Pilot House Drive, Zone C one retail commercial. Are there any speakers?
No speakers.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
It has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Uh, Councilman Ely.
I just want to say, council, I've had the privilege and opportunity to visit Taylor Smoke on several occasions. They always are very professional and always enjoy myself when I have the opportunity to meet them.
Thank you, sir. Nothing further. Open the vote, please.
All right, Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones. Councilman Long.
Four.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Open the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Page thirty-five, item E two is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing zoning text amendment, Z T twenty twenty-five zero 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 three, amending and reordaining City Code, Chapter forty-five, zoning ordinance, Article thirty-two, Boards of Zoning Appeals to Add Language enacted by the Virginia General Assembly to Section four five three two zero two, Procedure for Appeal of Alleged Administrative Errors. Are there any speakers?
No speakers.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Open the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Page forty-five, item E three is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing zoning text amendment, Z T two zero two five zero 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 two, amending and reordaining City Code, Chapter forty-five, zoning ordinance, Article thirty-five, administration enforcement violation penalty and remedy, Section four five three five zero one, general to add language enacted by the Virginia General Assembly, expanding civil penalties for repeat or serious zoning violations. Are there any speakers?
No speakers.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Open the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Open the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Consent agenda. Item F contains the following items. Page fifty-two, minutes of the work session of August twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Page seventy, excuse me, minutes of the regular meeting of August twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Page one hundred and fourteen, resolution expressing the approval of the Hampton Newport News Community Services Board State Fiscal Year twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven Performance Contract Renewal and Revisions. Page one hundred and seventeen, resolution approving the city's participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against Alvogen, Amneal, Amputex, Hikma, Andiver, Milan, Sun, and Zetas, and directing the city attorney to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the city's participation in the settlement. Page one hundred twenty-one, resolution appropriating one hundred six thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents of interest earned in fiscal year twenty twenty-five from the Herbert Nicer bequests to the Newport News Department of Libraries and Information Services for the Main Street Library. Page one hundred twenty-four, ordinance authorizing a one-time, one and a half percent bonus paid to full-time local Department of Social Services employees. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, items F one through F six, all-inclusive?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Open the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Other City Council actions. Next on our agenda, other City Council actions, page one twenty-nine, item G one, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Item G one is a request to receive and open bids for a deed of access utility easement on city-owned property at three six two nine George Washington Memorial Highway and one hundred Darby Road in York County that allows Dominion Energy to build, operate, and maintain electric lines and equipment. I recommend approval.
All right, I have a bid before me. All right, I have a bid before me. I just opened an envelope only to open another envelope. That's what I'm doing? All right.
Then we're hoping it's a dollar.
Right. It is not a dollar. Have a bid from Dominion for $4,649. I mean, is that a record?
Right, it's usually a dollar, right?
Think so.
All right.
Close to it.
All right, I'll save that for you. Mr. Manager, I will save it.
I'll be happy to take that.
All right, got it. Follow-up action to be referred to the City Manager's Office, page one hundred forty-one, Item G2, Mr. Manager.
Item G2 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the City Manager to submit three grant applications on behalf of Newport News for inclusion in Virginia Department of Transportation's Transportation Alternatives Set-Aide Program and to execute all necessary related documents. The proposed projects include Trail 757, Birthplace of America Trail, otherwise known as the Boat Trail, Warwick Boulevard Pedestrian Improvements, and Marshall Avenue Pedestrian Improvements. I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No speakers.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Open the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Page one forty-eight, Item G3, Mr. Manager.
Item G3 is a request to adopt a resolution endorsing the city's applications for Virginia Department of Transportation Revenue Sharing Program Grants for fiscal years 2029 and 2030. The city is seeking $10 million in state funding with an equal $10 million local match for eleven transportation projects. I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No speakers.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Please open the vote.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Page one sixty-five, Item G4, Mr. Manager.
Item G4, the first of two items, is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the City Manager to execute all documents necessary to implement a standard project administration agreement between the City of Newport News and the Virginia Department of Transportation for the Federal Lands Access Program Funding for Trail 757, otherwise known as Birthplace of America Trail Multi-Use Path Project. I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No speakers.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Councilwoman Tina Vick.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor. I have a question, Alan. Now, is there any reference as to when the trail will start? When will they start building the trail here? When will they get to Newport News Park?
Yes, and I think Brian is here who can help me as well. So, the trail, as council and the community may know, is a new project, which has been undertaken actually several years ago to connect the Virginia Greater Peninsula with the existing Capitol Trail, which goes from Jamestown to the city of Richmond. So, over the last several years, through the efforts of individual localities, as well as the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, the individual member jurisdictions here on the peninsula have been taking the portions of the trail segment which run across their communities to align all the segments in order to get from Williamsburg to the city of Hampton. And so, each jurisdiction is taking on the work as funding mostly through grant resources become available. And so, the action items that you have before you this evening are federal grant projects that have matured and allowed for the city to participate and apply for funding that helps us construct the segments that cross the city of Newport News. So, you may have read that, you know, Williamsburg and some other communities, we're all kind of working at this individually and at our own pace. There is no blanket funding for the entire trail to go from Williamsburg all the way across the peninsula. So, we've been working at this for a number of years. The two segments, really three this evening, provide for the trail to come into the city along Route 60 or Warwick Boulevard. They eventually tie to the Inview site down Fort Houston Boulevard, and then from Inview, they allow for trail access and connectivity to Newport News Park. And so, that really is the segment that we're focused on at this particular time. That is from Newport News Park South to Pocahontas Parkway. And Pocahontas Parkway allows us to connect to James City County, which allows us to connect to Williamsburg, which allows us to get to James City.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Any further discussion? Open the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Page one seventy-nine, Item G5, Mr. Manager.
Item G5 is a second of two items. This is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $1,100,000 in fiscal year 2026 Federal Highways Federal Lands Access Program Grant Funds for the Trail 757, otherwise known as the Birthplace of America Trail Multi-Use Path Project. I recommend approval.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Open the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Appropriations. Page one eighty-three, Appropriations, Item H, Mr. Manager.
There are two appropriations this evening. Item H1 is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $500,000 from the Fiscal Year 2026 Bond Authorization Streets and Bridges Category for Transportation Safety Improvement Programs. The funding will support the LED streetlight upgrades on additions and additions program. The second request is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $6 million from the Fiscal Year 2026 Bond Authorization Public Buildings Category for major renovations and repairs. Funding will address roof and HVAC maintenance, structural and life safety system repairs, ADA compliance upgrades, and other building improvements at multiple sites. I recommend approval of both appropriations.
Are there any speakers?
No speakers.
Is there a motion to approve Item H1 and H2?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Open the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Citizen comments. Item I, Citizen Comment, Citizen Comments on Matters remain to the Business of City Council. I will call each name in the order it appears in front of me. First, we have Mr. Edward Maulbeck.
My name's Edward Maulbeck. I live at 310 Riverside Drive. I'm here representing Southeastern Virginia Powersports LLC, which is the Indian Motorcycle Dealership on Jefferson Avenue. I'm the Chief Executive Manager. I have a one-stop hydraulic elevator in my building that has not been inspected for almost three years. And I've been working with the city to try to get it inspected. That's kind of why I'm here. Because the program was changed in 2023 to 2024. I have three notices here, ones to get it inspected in October of last year, ones to get it inspected by October this year, and one was in June of this year telling me I'm in violation and all the bad things that can happen. Prior to the letter that it was in violation, I had already contacted the city, did the process. There is a process online of how to get the elevator inspected, and there's a permit you have to fill out. So, I filled the permit out. It says email in, and I emailed it in, and they're supposed to send me an invoice for $100. Never sent me invoice. Multiple phone calls to the department, not getting anywhere. Finally, I called the guy, that's the director, Harold Roche, I believe his name is, the director of the elevator program. Left a message on the machine. Took him a week to get back to me. He gets back to me. He doesn't have the answer, and he runs the department. So, I basically, because I, the new process is, I have to hire another company to watch the company that maintains my elevator, which never happened before. So, the city literally turned a process that was $100, plus my contract, into like a $400, $500 program. City's never going to show up. They're just going to kick out the paperwork after one vendor looks at another vendor to qualify their work, and then pay the city, and they mail the permit. So, no one from the city steps in the building. Very hard to coordinate. Mr. Roche owes me, he could not explain, the guy that owns the program could not explain how the program works, because I'm looking at it, it doesn't make sense. And he owes me a phone call back. It's been a couple of weeks, so I figure I might as well show up here. So, the other concerning piece of it is, we had a fire inspector, so we had a fire marshal inspector, I think, three days ago. Nicest guy in the world. Second one in ten years. Supposedly, a fire happened in Newport News in a dealership now. They're going around inspecting dealerships. We passed. He looked at the elevator and said, hey, I'm still passing you. I know the elevators are not inspected. None of them are, because he knows the program's broke. So, the elevator's not been inspected for going on three years, and I passed that inspection, which requires the elevator to be inspected. So, I thought you all should know. That's why I'm here.
Thank you, sir. If you stay back, we'll make sure you get in contact with the right city department.
Yeah. I don't want to make enemies, but I know he's already mad at me, the guy that runs the program, but I just, I want my elevator inspected, you know, and it's, I'm trying to run a business, you know. I'm suspended.
If you stay back, we'll make sure that someone talks with you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sir, you know, sir, if you just have a moment, I would like to ask our deputy city manager, who can assist you in trying to work through the challenges that you've referenced tonight. So, he'll be happy to meet with you right out in the lobby.
Right now.
Right now.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Chris Fryman.
Hello, Vice Mayor Bethany, Council. I'm going to talk here about an Executive Order 51 that was signed off by Yonkin. It happened a few months ago. I actually read the thing, and I know we're pushing for the Bloomberg AI. I'm not a big fan of AI. I like it when doctors use it to try to increase diagnosis of cancers. I don't like it too much in politics, and that's what the order is, is to help push for AI. So, what he wants to do is streamline our government regulations with this AI program. But when I was reading through it, he doesn't talk about just doing it to make it streamlined. He actually talks about lining our regulations up with six different states. Kentucky, he said it's for the border states, but they're Kentucky, Tennessee, West Virginia, North Carolina, South Carolina, and Georgia. At first, I thought it was something to do with the Fourth Supreme Court Circuit, which is where we sit, but he didn't bring Maryland into it. I thought it maybe have, it might have had to do something with the Appalachia Pact they have, but he didn't bring Pennsylvania in with it either. So, my concern is, is what's really going on? Because when you, when you read the executive order, it talks about jamming in within a month, going through each department, and then another month to basically solidify it. And I'm worried it's looking for weaknesses maybe our, our General Assembly has within laws that conflict or counter, and allows him to expand powers past maybe what he should. So, if we're going to do the Bloomberg AI, I think we should do it in a way to also look for how we are going to mesh or blend in with our current states, streamline new regulations or deregulations that might come up. I don't have a lot of faith in this. We had our, I remember when he got into office, he talked about charter schools. He wanted to do charter schools, and I know we have magnet schools here. They're good. I, I wish all of our schools were that good, and a kid didn't have to win a lottery or something like that to get into a good program. But then, he also, when he did that, then Mires, our Attorney General, then spent time in the state because something didn't match up in Fairfax, suing, suing the school district for not bringing in certain groups of people. So, like I said, if we can, if we can make it a solid form, we're good. At the school board meeting on the nineteenth, they were talking about collaboration, or, I'm sorry, a unionization. And I'm not from Virginia. I'm from Ohio. And the state there is different. We got collaborative bargaining in 2016. Up there, they've had it for a long time. And in Ohio, they have a whole state union. That means all the, everybody hired by the state is all brought in, one strong union. However, it's different down here. Our money comes from the state. It goes to the city. We pad in about $120 million, and then it goes to the school for spending. Up there, and this is kind of getting into the charter where you wanted to possibly put school, charter committee was talking about putting school board members or having to appoint them. Up there, it's different. The cities give the state the money, then the state gives the schools the money, but then they also do audits with their Department of Education to look for fiscal budgeting, as well as fiscal bu- budgeting, as well as contract audits, to make sure they know what they're getting into. So, sorry. I stumbled through that one, but I appreciate your attention and time.
No, thank you, sir. Next up, we have Ms. Carol Carcuff.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Carol Carcuff, like a car in the cuff on your pants, and I live in the Denby section of Newport News, 197 Revelle Drive. I've come to share with you my concern. The other day, I went to, thank you. The other day, I went to Chick-fil-A to get a milkshake, and it was a good milkshake, but I noticed again, there's a state tax and there's a city tax on our foods. And so, what started out to be $1.98 was more plus five percent, 68 cents tax. Anywhere you go, whether it's a restaurant or a drive-through, the taxes are getting so that you could buy a taco and spend 28 to 30 cents on the tax. I think this really needs to be looked at, because state tax and city tax really adds up to a person's pocketbook. And when we're trying to keep things at an even keel, that's important to all families. It's important to all of us when we drive through and want a quick meal and end up spending more than 50 cents on the tax that we ordered. The next thing I want to share is I do live in the Denby section, and I'd like to know what are the plans that the city has for the large piece of property that Kmart used to be on? It's a big property. It's a safe property, but it's been blank for several years. And I'd like to know or have be, have guidance as to what are the plans for that? It's a good place for a new library. It's a good place to move a fire station, which we're finally getting a new one over there by the airport. Hooray. I love my city. That's why I stay here. And I also have a question about the Costco, the plans for the new Costco. Is it really going to be on Bland and Jefferson at that large intersection? I drove around there. I, sometimes I buy lunch, and then I go and find a pretty place to park. And if you haven't gone over to the Ferguson Building property, you'll notice a very, very well-kept, nice building. And the idea of tearing that down, I mean, it could be a beautiful school. I'm sure they've looked at many different uses. But it's time that we know how to get information on things like... But it's time that we know how to get information on things like food tax, the Kmart, and Costco. I'm Carol, and I'd like to know, and I'm sure you guys know how to get in touch with me. Thanks so much.
Thank you, ma'am. That is all of the speakers that I have before me. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right, we are now at new business. Our next item is new business. City manager?
None, sir. Thank you.
City attorney?
Nothing, sir.
City clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Um, city council comments, Councilman Long?
I just have one thing to share. This month, city council is partnering with Thrive Peninsula as to bring attention to food insecurity in Newport News. So council, September eighteenth, we're going to be partnering with Thrive voluntarily alongside the sit, the staff and spotlighting their incredible work. A little bit about Thrive, if you don't know, Thrive operates a client choice grocery store. It's located right on Nettles Drive between Orchard Point and City Center Boulevard. Back in 2024, Thrive served over twenty-nine thousand people and distributed more than five hundred and ninety-one thousand pounds of food. They also provide financial coaching, utility, housing assistance in connection to long-term solution. So between September ninth and September thirtieth, we're launching a citywide food drive called Stock the Shells. And so we'll place red bands throughout the city at the different community centers, city hall, libraries, as well as Semi It Market, which is in the southeast community in Safe Haven. We'll be collecting cereal, rice, pasta, pasta sauce, canned beans, carrots, collards, plus we're asking for Hispanic heritage, culturally relevant for Hispanic heritage month, which is adobo, seasoning, hominy, cornmeal, and sweetened condensed milk. So we're just inviting all our city residents, businesses, civic groups to come donate food for the citywide drive. If you cannot support by donating food, you can offer a donation through thrive peninsula dot org, and all the money will stay here in Newport News. This initiative is a part of our nest Newport News campaign, which is neighbors engaged in support together. And so the whole idea of this initiative is to make sure our families support other families, so no one will go hungry anytime of the city, at any time of the year. And that's all I have.
Councilman Coleman?
Good evening. Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to, I'll just quickly piggyback on what Councilman Long said. I have a relationship with Thrive as well. We have a Boys and Girls Club that is connected with that organization, and they are fantastic neighbor. And just talking with Angela, the director, the other day, they served over thirty-one hundred people last month, so the need is there. So whatever you can do to assist them in their mission would be greatly appreciated. So thank you for bringing attention to that, Councilman Long. Just, just real quick, just want to say we had a great, I had a great pleasure last week participating in Bishop Jones's town hall meeting at Holy Tappernacle with my colleague, Councilman Harris. It was, it was a great forum. We talked about housing, we talked about public safety, mental health, the airport, just a wide range of topics and issues, and it went very well. And it was, it was good to be back in my old stomping grounds, but I think it was very informative for the citizens, and it was for, for us as well, I believe. We heard a lot of great feedback from our citizens. Also, Mr. Manager, I want to give a shout out to Public Works and to Water Works. I had a couple of issues that popped up the last couple of weeks from some citizens, and they were, they were right on it. And so just someone to say thank you so much. It's all about customer service, and I know we have a very high bar that we set, but they are definitely reaching it, and I just want to say thank you. Also, want to give a shout out to Sheriff Wark and his community maintenance team. They also came out after hearing, after getting some complaints about some grass issues, came right out and took care of those. So, I mean, it's definitely a team effort. I know beautification is a very high priority for this council and removing blight, you know, based on our last community survey, eighty-eight percent of the participants in that survey believed that blight was a big issue for them, a very high issue for them. So I appreciate the team for doing their, their, doing their duty on that. Also, want to give congratulations to Owen Miller on his new promotion to deputy city manager. I think it's well deserved. You've been a tremendous asset to us for, I want to say, the last eleven years, I think it is. So welcome, and I can see tonight you got your first dose of being a deputy city manager. So also, we have a public safety meeting coming up on September seventeenth. We're going to be talking about a number of issues. One of them is going to be truancy in our schools and about how we can help our school system with eliminating truancy, because I think everybody realized when you have a high truancy rate, usually the crime rate follows. And that's what, one of the things that the Public Safety Committee is doing is exploring some of the challenges that are, that we're facing in our community and hopefully coming together and to address them. We're also going to be looking at current crime stats and also opportunities for our youth when it comes to city center. So if you have any ideas, suggestions, please email me. Be more than happy to explore those with the Public Safety Committee. And then also, speaking of public safety, September, September twenty-third is our next council meeting. It's going to be, I believe, in the North District? Or is it here?
It's at Denby.
It's at Denby. Thank you.
They're screaming at us.
Yeah, that's right. Got to ask people to know. And, and there's going to be an issue there that's going to be coming up that just came through our planning commission, is talking about new regulations when it comes to vape shops in the city of Newport News. It's been a very hot topic. Everybody, there's a lot of opinions about it. So please, if you want to come out and voice your concerns or suggestions, please do on September twenty-third to the Denby Community Center. I think it's a very important topic, something that we, you know, the city needs to address as soon as possible and hopefully find some great solutions. And then last but not least, October seventh, that is going to be the first Tuesday in October, Councilman Long and I will be hosting a central district town hall meeting at the Fountain Two Building in City Center. It's going to be from six thirty PM until eight PM. We just felt like it was, it was important to provide another opportunity for our citizens to come out that can't come out on a second and fourth Tuesday down to a council meeting, something that may be a little closer to their homes and to where they work and come and find out, like Ms. Carol was talking about, the, the things that, you know, the topics that the council's talking about, the initiatives that we're looking at, and then also being able to give us their input and ideas about what we can do, not only in the district, but throughout the city. So thank you very much, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Councilwoman Vick?
Yes, I too want to just, I'm very excited about what's going to be happening with Thrive, and I'm glad you set that up for us, Councilman Long, because there are several organizations in our city that really put out a huge effort to be able to help eliminate problems from some people who are in need, particularly as it relates to food disparities. And so Thrive is on the forefront of it, Angela and her entire team. So I totally would want to continue to support that organization because they have been helping so many families in Newport News. And the other thing I have, from the General Federation of Women's Clubs, I'm trying to make sure I can see this right, from Women's Clubs, their International Day of Service will be, they invite people out, the group is inviting people out on Saturday, September twenty-seventh, 2025, at eleven AM, the National Day of Service to end domestic violence and sexual violence. It's at Hilton Christian Church Grounds, 100 James River Drive in Newport News. So I hope you all will be able to attend Saturday, September twenty-seventh at eleven AM. If you need more information, you can always email me, and I can send you an email. And that's all I have, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Councilman Ely?
I also like to piggyback with my colleagues with the successes of the Thrive. They're a very great initiative organization. I work with West Next Partner with them quite frequently, and they always come through for the community. I've been there several times and see how many people come through that food pantry. It's just overwhelming how much support they give to the city of Newport News. Also, I'd like to thank everybody who came out to the Southeast Community Day. Even though I wasn't there physically, I was up at seven AM in the morning on the phone with them as they was lining people up that came at eight o'clock. So thanks to all the volunteers that helped out with Southeast Community Day. Also, on September the sixteenth, myself and Tina Vick is doing a bus tour called Imagine Newport News. We're going to take the trolleys. One going to start at Deling Grove, and the other going to start at Main Street Library. I'm going to be on one trolley, Councilman Tina Vick is going to be on another trolley, and we're just going to talk about what Newport News looks like in our district and what we want to do better to make change in our district. So we're excited about that. That's on September the sixteenth, from one to three PM. If you have any questions, you can reach out to the clerk to get information or flyer regarding to sign up for that event. That's all, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Councilman Harris?
Yes, thank you for everyone who came out on tonight and shared your feedback with us. We really appreciate it. I just want to quickly also want to thank everyone who participated in the Southeast Parade Day that we had this past Saturday. It was, I, I loved that parade because I get to see a lot of friends, family, classmates that I haven't seen in a while, but I see them every year at the Southeast Parade. It always brings a great deal of excitement, brings a lot of good vibes out there to the community. So I just thank everybody who puts that together. Special shout out to Mr. Andrew Shannon, who has been doing that and coordinating that parade for years. So thank you for, for that. And just also for everyone to know, not this weekend, but the following weekend, the Denby Day Parade will also take place in the Denby area, starting at Denby High School, going around the corner of Denby Boulevard to Old Courthouse Community Center. So hopefully we can see and have great weather like we did this past Saturday on September the twentieth, I believe the date is. So thank you for everyone who has played a role in putting those two together, and that's all I have, Vice Mayor. Thank you.
First, I want to just mention to council, after this meeting, stay back because we are going to take a picture in which I've received three texts to remind me. So we need to stay back, and we're going to take a picture. We have Ms. Charvela West, who's in the back from United Way, one of our amazing partners. Forgive me, I don't recall what the picture is for, but we're going to stay and we're going to take the picture with her. And the last thing I want to do before I pass it over to the mayor is congratulate him. The reason you do not see him is because his son was born.
Oh, wow.
So, yeah, let's, let's give him a round of applause. I know you can hear it. So it, it doesn't seem, well, it wasn't that long ago, that we were on opposite sides in which he sat here, and I was virtual, but we are grateful, Mayor Jones, that everything went well, went great, that you, the first lady, are recovering fine at the house. I hope you are getting some sleep. I hope you are looking out for your wife, and she's getting some sleep. That first, that first week is, is a beast for sure. So, but we, we, we truly care about you, we love you, we just say congratulations on the new addition to the family and look forward to meeting this future president. I don't know what to say. Congratulations, man. That being said, Mayor Jones?
Thanks, all. Just want to say thanks to Team Newport News, family is doing well, and look forward to seeing everyone here real soon. Thanks, all.
Thank you. All right. That being said, if there is no further business, we stand adjourned.